Shannon, you on here this morning? Okay, y'all ready to go?
Fix and leave again?
No.
Well, I was, Shannon, but everything changed.
Are you ready, Shannon? Okay. Ms. KK, are you online? I was waiting on Ms. KK. She was supposed to be online to record. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. If you got it recorded, yeah, I'll see where you got it started already.
Hey, what do y'all have to talk about? You gonna do anything for Thanksgiving dinner? Or do I need to do that?
Don't know yet.
Well, I mean, I know me, dude.
Yeah. We'll talk about that. That's where we just go in.
Morning, everyone. We're gonna get started. It's a Tuesday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty. It's about three minutes after ten, and we're gonna ask Brother Harvard and Dubos to abandon this gospel singer, open themselves in prayer.
Our most gracious and loving heavenly Father, we come before you this morning, Father, these elected men and women, those that are hired to do the will of the people. Father, we ask you your guidance, your leading, your stewardship, Father, your knowledge and wisdom. As we move forward in this difficult time, that Father, he is every person here is here to the very highest integrity. Father, God, that you are the call. While we know in your word and First Timothy chapter two, as we pray to believe, of our country, of our state, of our county, of cities. And Father, I live and he is every person here before you this morning. Father, give our hearts to follow after your word with integrity, that which is right, right, just, and lawful, but above all, Godly. Father, that your word, your precepts, and everything that they do is from this day forward. Lord, by you, as they hold their awesomes in high esteem. Father, I would care to give you praise and honor and glory if you now, by your spirit and by your word, preach it. Give them the tempering. Father, lay aside all perversities, all hypocrisies, and all vanities, that them, as public servants, can move forward to do the will of the people according to the law under your leadership and God's holy heavenly Father. For it's in the presence, holy name of the King, that we ask now that by your spirit and by your word, you take all these proceedings today, and all decisions to be made in Jesus' holy name. And everyone in the faith, I say it. Amen.
Thank you, Brother Dubo. We're gonna call a meeting to order. We do have a quorum acknowledging the guests that's here today. First, we're gonna have the consent agenda. If you look over that, we do not have the previous minutes included. And the end of the health program, the September, is not included.
I don't think the health here, I don't know what month it's for.
September. It's July and August.
We also don't have the county extension agent support. County extension.
It is in there, though.
Oh, it is.
Is any question on consent agenda? If not, I hear a motion to approve.
Stand by. A second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller, second by Mr. White, that we accept the consent agenda. No discussion, all in favor. Unanimously, five oh. Number two is deliberate and consider action on the following items. The number one is a budget amendment, approved part-time position to begin work on November the first, twenty twenty. And I present this as for the Treasury Department. Ms. Ginger, if you don't mind, come around the front so everybody can hear you.
I was just wanting to say to all of your present budget amendments to get my part-time to go ahead and start. So, I could really use this at a time.
And this rate is in line with everybody else's part-time rate?
Twelve dollars an hour.
Yeah.
So, it's pretty close.
I make that motion.
A second.
Thank y'all.
Motion made by Mr. Fuller, and second by Mr. Thompson, to approve the part- approved part-time position for the Treasury Department to start November the first, twenty twenty, as a budget amendment. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Unanimously, five oh. Number two is approved twenty twenty-one Newton County resolution for end of defense grant program application. Ms. Leah, if you don't mind, come around here for the people on the computer and hear you.
I hope so, brother. This is the, an annual grant we get. We get anywhere from twelve thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars in help case for end of defense attorney. And this is just the annual one that's coming up. And we don't know how much we're gonna get until about, usually January, February, depends on our previous year's reporting. But this is just a resolution to get this started.
I make that motion.
A second.
Motion been made by Mr. Bomby, and second by Mr. Thompson, to approve the resolution for the end of defense grant program application. Is any discussion? Not all in favor? Unanimously, five oh. Number three is to accept final communication with the governors of the Charles E. Reed and Associates for the twelve twenty-one twenty nineteen audit financial statement. Ms. Leah?
This is a standard letter from the outside auditors. Just kinda going over, I think it's just standard jargon that they have to put in there for our twenty nineteen audit. Our audit reported date is the twenty ninth of September, and they're doing a few little finals and reviews of it, and we should have it in our hands by the next week or so. And this just has to be accepted into the minutes.
Hello? I make that motion. Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Bomby, and second by Mr. White, we accept the final communication with governors from Charles E. Reed and Associates for the twenty twelve thirty-one nineteen audit financial statement. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Unanimously, five oh. Number four is discussing appropriate approved lease purchase contract between Newton County and Welch State Bank for the Peterbilt debris truck. Ms. Leah?
Yes, we had talked about the violence of the property, the destruction of the property. Welch State gave us the best rate of three point oh four percent. They have a permit to be used on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and they've got lease to our contract, and they've got three hundred. And it's just the contracts that they can
I make that motion that we approve the lease purchase contract between Newton County and Welch.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. White, and second by Mr. Fuller. We approve the lease purchase contract between Newton County and Welch State Bank for the Peterbilt debris truck. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Unanimously, five oh. Number five, approved contract between Newton County and Gary R. Taylor and Associates for twenty twenty Texas CDBG administration.
Is Mark on?
Uh, Mark is on.
Okay. I think you said he was gonna cut something out.
Mark, you wanna expel on that?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. Judge, this is an application we submitted on behalf of the county a couple of years ago. This is what we, all the commissioners are commonly referred to as the Regular Round Community Development Block Grant Program. This comes around every two years. The application amount was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It was for road projects in each precinct. In precinct one, it was for work on County Road thirty sixty-four and County Road forty thirty-two. In precinct two, it was for County Road ten twenty-two. In precinct three, it was for County Road two thousand and one. In all three of those precincts, the application was for materials only, with the commissioners utilizing forced account labor to install the materials. In precinct four, it was for County Road forty-one twenty-eight, and that was to be accomplished through a construction contract. We have not heard definitely from Department of Agriculture, but we are anticipating at this point in time that this application will be funded.
Mark, what was the road number for precinct one again?
In precinct one, it was County Road thirty sixty-four from the intersection of FM three sixty-three, and it was approximately twenty-six hundred and forty linear feet. In precinct, on County Road forty thirty-two, it was from the intersection of one ninety and going approximately a thousand and fifty-six linear feet.
Thank you. How was about fifty thousand per precinct?
Uh, let's see. It was sixty-two thousand and fifteen dollars per precinct. Now, that's a quick glance. I think that's what it is. If my numbers are right here.
Okay, I hear a motion to approve.
Stand by. Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller, and second by Mr. Thompson, to approve the contract between Newton County and Taylor and Associates for the twenty twenty Texas CDBG administration. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? Unanimously, five oh.
Thank y'all very much.
Sure. Number six is discussing appropriate approved purchase of signal booster for precinct JP precinct one. Ms. Shannon, you on?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Okay. In your packet, I think it's in folder for Commissioner Court, Commissioner Court for today's date, and it's item number six. It's the two solutions that we have to increase the stability for their internet there since we can't run a wired internet service. I have signal boosters here, one from Wilson Pro, and then the other would be AT&amp;T fixed wireless internet. Both of them would include mountain antenna on the roof, which would provide more signal inside the building. The AT&amp;T bundle would come for a price of seventy dollars a month with the modem that includes the internet, the signal booster. They include the installation for ninety-nine dollars to get all of that up and going. So, just for seventy dollars a month. Now, it does have a limit to two hundred and fifty gigs of data, but I'm pretty sure we're gonna use far less than that. And then an additional fifty gigs overage would be ten dollars more, if it were something like that. The other, the Wilson Pro antenna would include mounted on the roof again, and it would just boost the signal inside. It wouldn't come with a modem. We currently have an older Verizon Wi-Fi hotspot inside the building, and this would just amplify that signal for it, for increased stability. But it could also be used for any carrier, AT&amp;T, Sprint, Verizon, T-Mobile. So, it's, I wanted to bring these two to y'all attention, and y'all could just go and possibly approve one of them. The cost for the Wilson Pro would be a thousand and ninety-nine for the amplified mount outside the building for the antenna. Additional skids and whatnot would be an extra cost, and then we'd have to have someone install it. So, that would be an extra cost.
Is that a thousand and ninety-nine per month?
Just one time cost. You buy it, and then you could relocate it wherever you want. Afterwards, if, you know, it's no longer needed there, take it down, move it somewhere else. Now, we do currently need something similar to this inside the Sheriff Department. They're requesting something to boost cell signal. Inside the dispatch, they get nothing. And there've been times where, you know, we've lost internet and phone service, and dispatchers were having to use their cell phones, but cell phone signal inside there is almost nonexistent. For the AT&amp;T, she said we have thirty days once they install it. If it's not working out for us, if it didn't help us out at all, we can go ahead and cancel that contract. Sort of a trial period.
Good, isn't it right? So, is there a contract period of two years or a year or what?
Uh, let's see. Let me read right quick. I didn't see where it said anything about a contract term.
So, they just start charging us seventy dollars per month?
Uh-huh. And we're already paying somewhere near that for the Verizon hotspot we have there now.
I see.
Which one of these you think would be the best service?
Um, we have, I think the AT&amp;T would be the better. It'd benefit us more. The only downfall is at out there. I went and checked on my cell phone, and I get one bar. So, it's gonna be, if we can point it to a, if we can find a tower around there to point it to, it's supposed to reach up to six miles, this antenna. So, if we can get it pointed in the right direction and it boosts the signal for us, this would be the better way to go. But can't promise it because there's very little signal over there. But we have thirty days to tell them it's not working.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking about, Shannon. If we had thirty days for trial, trial period, that would be paying out this thousand and ninety-nine dollars and not have no trial.
Exactly. And they install it and everything, so.
All right. There any more questions?
So, we're going to set the antenna?
Yes. No, not on AT&amp;T. The question was, are we gonna have to set an antenna or anything for this one?
No, yeah. There's an antenna that would be mounted outside, and then a modem on the inside of the office. But they install all of it. AT&amp;T tech.
But the Wilson Pro, we're going to get somewhere to install it?
Exactly.
Okay.
We're pretty much just buying the equipment, and then we have to figure it out from there.
Yeah.
I have a small office, Wilson Pro, in my home, just to increase my cell phone signal inside my office, and it worked great. But I did have to pay fifteen hundred dollars to get it installed to just a third-party contractor.
Yeah. Your motion to affect or?
Welcome to go to the AT&amp;T. I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made by Mr. Fuller, and second by Mr. White, that we contract with AT&amp;T for the purchase of the signal booster for Justice Peak Precinct One. Any discussion? Not all in favor? You know?
Before you go away, internet at my office is out.
Okay, I'll check into it.
Well, I may give you a hint. The install was generated there Wednesday, I believe it was, Wednesday or Thursday, and that's when it went out.
Okay. All right.
And Shannon, also too, it's not been installed in my office yet neither.
Yes, sir. I sent y'all an email on that. It's being scheduled with AT&amp;T for a test and turn-up, they call it, and it's scheduled for the nineteenth.
So, much for that fast service, right?
I'm sorry, say again.
So, much for that fast service they was gonna do, right?
Yeah. Well, so I think there was just some miscommunication between the guy that installed it. So, he basically said he turned it over to us, and then that day that I went over to install it, we couldn't get any service through it. So, I did a lot of calling around, and this was, you know, one of the steps. So, yeah, miscommunication, and I'll know better in the future, but it still has to be scheduled. You know, we went back and forth through AT&amp;T for them to get it scheduled. You gotta give them four days in advance, yada, yada, so they scheduled it for the nineteenth.
Okay, number seven is discussing, consider action on addressing ADA SIC certificates for form relative to County Road forty-one twenty-three. Mr. Pett?
Yes, sir. We, as you may know, we received this last week for San pit Road. We had to update this receipt. We had two of the bids for inside the project. Project, uh, right after the bid opening, the consultant, the Shaw, contacted us with a form that EDA D compared called SIC certificate, which generally says that the county owns the Eastman Flash Road Drive Way that's out there. I told him that based on our experience with the project, and frankly, most county roads, there's not really a dedicated driveway on any county road that I'm not on. And he said, he said, well, you may wanna turn it over to the county legal counsel so they can get this addressed before y'all award the contract. And I said, well, the main thing I need to do is get the contract ordered so we can go to work. And so, what we did, what we're gonna do is, we gave that to the county attorney, and there's a method, we believe, that can be pursued where in a nutshell, it stays on use of land over several, several decades. It's obvious it's a public property. But Bob talked that we need to get that paperwork done before y'all can award the contract. So, that's where we're at right now.
Well, it was a state highway that he just gave back to the county.
Yeah. It used to be a state highway.
Yeah.
And the county just received it. Like in most states, probably takes a pile apart.
Yeah.
But based on everything I've heard before, I don't have any instruments that indicate that it's a public property. I just go by the use of it. You've got, you've got that contact side up there. You've got San pit Road. You know, it's on. People drive on that road anytime they want.
Well, that's
same after decades.
This, this and that, that county road number.
We've got county road number assigned to it. It's on nine one one mapping system. So, I had a brief discussion with John with recording his office, and he's gonna see what they can do to try to expedite it. But in a nutshell, I was told by a different lawyer that I know who's done some work at different counties dealing with things like this. He said there's a term called affidavit of use that could be executed the commissioner's court. They just, basically just says, this is all right, and all the past, and therefore, we have a right to work with it. But anyway, we're working through that process right now and try to get that into place. But it would've been nice if I had gotten all this six months ago before we did this.
Who would even thought it?
Sir.
Who would even thought that?
Well, Shaw told me that he got it, when he got it on Friday morning from EDA, he said he's done several EDA projects, and this is the first time he's ever seen one of these before, but EDA's provision. one of his form, but EDA has provisioned him. He said this was moved to him. In any case, we're getting that for it. And whatever manner it be quicker will be quicker because we've got good bids.
Your Honor, Mr. Courtney, y'all, either one got any, anything y'all would like to say about that?
Your Honor, uh, just to let the court know, we're gonna do what we can as far as affidavit of use. We're probably gonna have to talk to somebody in the EDA to determine what they will take in lieu of a title opinion because as, uh, uh, Mr. Oats was saying, odds are there's no document that we have on file showing that we have title interest to that property. So if we can obtain an affidavit of use and prepare one and submit it, my next question's gonna be to EDA to determine if they will accept that. Because you know, and the commissioners know, that trying to get a title opinion ran around here is, uh, it's like pulling teeth. So especially when we're diving into documents that we know we don't have.
Yeah. Do you think maybe the state still have something on file for their right of way when they own it, the state?
They very well may have, uh, but I'm, I'm going, I'm deferring back to the fact that debt college is the one that signed it, and they also, uh, you know, did the, uh, 911 addresses, so they should have something on file that we can start with as well.
So John, in your opinion, uh, there'd be no action took on this, uh, agenda item?
We, we can't take action based on the current, uh, site certificate because we don't have a title opinion. And, uh, you know, I know that they're talking about prescriptive easements in here, but, you know, that's a court process, and, uh, like Mr. Oats was saying, we need to get this done as soon as possible so we can maintain the good bids that we currently have. So we need to see what we can do to avoid having to do a full-blown title opinion, and to do that, I'm gonna start with the EDA and debt comp.
All right. Thank you, John.
You're welcome, Your Honor.
Here a motion to table this.
Don't move.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller and second by Mr. Thompson to table, uh, item number seven. Uh, all in favor? Five vote. You now have the slate. Uh, number eight, is discussing appropriate approved appointment of Norma Williams, uh, Tina McDaniel and Cecil Williams as Commissioners of the Newton County Emergency Service District Number Five, uh, and that's.
I don't think they've done that.
There were two more that, there were two others we had, but we were going through because we thought we had done the two. It was for devil's pocket. We had done two, and then they turned around and said we had three more. And we, and we look back and we have never done these ones before.
Don't move. Motion been made by Mr. Pombi and second by Mr. Thompson that we approve the appointments, uh, for the Newton County Emergency Service District Number Five. Is any discussion? Not all in favor? Five vote. Number nine, uh, discussing appropriate extend the COVID-19, COVID-19 disaster declaration until November the 9th, uh, 2020. This is just extending it from one commutational court to the next. Uh, your motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller and, uh, second by Mr. White, we extend the COVID-19 dis disaster declaration until November the 9th, uh, 2020. Uh, any discussion? Not all in favor? Five vote. Uh, number 10 is likewise, uh, is discuss appropriate extending the Hurricane Laurel disaster declaration until November the 9th, 2020. And, uh, we're still got that disaster going on, so I need that extended. I hear a motion.
I make the motion.
Got it. Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Pombi that, uh, we extend the Hurricane decoration disasters, Hurricane Laurel, uh, disaster declaration to November the 9th, 2020. All in favor? Five vote. Uh, number 11, is discussing appropriate extend the Hurricane Delta, uh, disaster declaration to November the 9th, 2020.
Don't move.
Motion been made by Mr. Pombi, second by Mr. Thompson that we extend the Hurricane Delta, uh, disaster declaration to November the 9th, 2020. All in favor? Five vote. Time to pay the bill. Go, Mr. Harris.
Fund number 10, general fund, $644,399.61. District County State Fund, $2,099.75. Fund number 20, Road and Bridge General, $25,005.2795. Fund number 21, Road and Bridge Precinct One, $21,369.06. Fund 22, Road and Bridge Precinct Two, $66,435.53. Fund 23, Road and Bridge Precinct Three, $28,001.2484. Fund 24, Road and Bridge Precinct Four, $20,464.58. Fund 29, VAW grant, $5,001.6308. Fund 31, Commissioner's Special Precinct One, $167,644.18. Commissioner's Special, uh, Precinct Two, $144,670.83. Fund 33, Commissioner's Special Precinct Three, $20,007.1601. Fund 34, Commissioner's Special Precinct Four, $8,009.8498. Fund 36, Dedicated Road Precinct One, $825. Precinct, I mean, Fund 40, Records Perseverance, 1168.03. Fund 50, Solid Waste disposal, $24,769.10. Fund 51, voter registration, $3,920.07. Fund 53, Newton County Library, $13,009.2756. Fund 55, Restore Cooperation, $5,097.81. Fund 68, Hazard Mitigation Grant, $6,730. Fund 72, I mean, Fund 72, FEMA Grant, $13,481.24. Fund 76, Grant, $283,278. And Fund 92, Technology Fund, $523 for a total of $1,581,317.44.
Okay, any questions? Hear a motion to pay the bill?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Pombi and second by Mr. White that we pay the bills. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five vote. I hear a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller, second by Mr. White, adjourned at 10:40.